My phone says it's six o'clock, so I'm gonna call this meeting to order of the Westmoreland City Council. And there's Mr. Pratt right on time. And the first item of business, Pastor Workman, is gonna do a devotion for us.
I'll read quickly from the book of Isaiah. God calls Isaiah to speak to the city of Israel, the people of Israel, to say that you're worshiping, but you're not worshiping from your heart. Your worship is all outward expression. He goes on to tell Israel what they should be doing, and if they do this, he gives them four promises. I want to read those promises tonight from Isaiah 58, verse 11. The Lord will guide you continually and satisfy your soul in drought and strengthen your bones. First promise is the Lord guides us continually, but our worship is sweet from our heart. And satisfy your soul in the drought. We don't always have perfect weather. We don't always go through life with everything that we ever want. But it says, "I will strengthen your bones. You will be like a watered garden and like a spring of water whose waters do not fail." Our God is faithful. He reaches us and He touches us through even the driest seasons of our life. Let me pray. Lord in heaven, we thank you that you give us these promises. Sometimes our worship, Lord, isn't what you need to see. Our outward expression just seems a little different. Lord, I pray for the heart. I pray for the heart of this community. I pray for our leaders. I pray for our people. We each play a part in this community. It's the enemy that comes in and seeks to divide, and it's our God who multiplies. So, Lord, as we work and we love together, as we love others above ourselves, as we seek the greater good, as we seek courage and wisdom, may we seek the faithfulness of God in our life. May our hearts show heart of worship, heart of authenticity, and genuine love for one another. I pray a blessing over this time that we have together. I pray a blessing over the leaders that you've called us in our community. And I pray for each one of us, Lord, that we would come to know Jesus Christ as our Lord and Savior above all. In His name I pray. Amen.
I ask you to rise and remove your caps. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Chief, I think we can take the reservation off these two. I don't think they're gonna show up. The next item on the agenda was the proclamation I was gonna do for the DARE group, that's the Daughters Married and For Veterans, Revolutionary Veterans. But them ladies were sick and couldn't make it tonight, so they're gonna come up one day next week and I'll present them with their proclamation. Next item, can I call the robe, please?
Staples?
Here.
Borders?
Here.
Brown?
Here.
Calvert?
Here.
Jones?
Here.
Mary Lee?
Here.
That record shows that everybody's present. Next item is to adopt an agenda. And I've got that tonight too, right now.
Motion to adopt the agenda is second.
Motion been made by Vice Mayor Brown, second by Councilman Jones. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all favor, signify, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, will I sign? Record reflected, passed unanimously. And I'm entertaining a motion for August minutes 2024.
Make a motion to approve the August minutes from 2024. August 15th, 2024.
Second that motion.
Motion made by Councilman Jones to approve the minutes, second by Councilman Staples. Any discussion on this one? Hearing none, all signify, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, will I sign? That record reflected, passed unanimously. The next item of business is public comments, but I want to make a little announcement here. Tonight's meeting is a voting night. The only way you can speak is sign up on the sheet. Ms. Kelly, get into the sheet. The only way you can speak in this meeting is you'll get three minutes on start to speak to anything on the agenda. Otherwise, you can't speak in this meeting. And those that signed up, if you pose a question to any of us up here, they can't answer that question because they can't speak until a proper motion and second's been made to speak. And also, let me look at this here just a minute. Looks like everybody that signed up to speak wants to speak at the public hearing. So the next item of business is public comments, and that's on the other agenda items. Nobody signed up for that, so there's no comments for that. And before we go into the public hearing, I want to announce that we looked at this tax rate very hard, and we've spoken to a lot of people, and we all feel that the $1 tax rate is too excessive at one time. So I've spoken to each one of my council members, told them what my intent is gonna be, what I'm gonna recommend, and I'm gonna recommend a 63 cent tax rate at this time. But I'm also gonna recommend that from this point forward, that we do a tax rate every maybe every two years, 83 cents. Is that right?
You said 60 cents.
I said 60, okay, I'm sorry. 83 cents. Eighty-sixty-four cents on my mind, but I'm gonna recommend an 83 cent tax increase at this time. And then from this point forward, I'm gonna recommend that they raise taxes maybe every two years by two or three cents each time. I feel like the citizens can handle that a lot better. And also, I should know next month that Galton's going to vote on the natural gas line coming to Westmoreland. And once that gas line comes through, and I feel, I can't say a 99.9%, sure, but I feel like that vote's gonna be in our favor. Galton has spent a lot of money to get to that point, and I feel like once the natural gas gets through here, then we'll see a lot more sales tax revenue, which will take the burden off the taxpayers. And probably not, probably a lot, well, I'll make some more announcements when we get into the state, when we get into that. So with that being said, I'm gonna open up the public hearing at 6:09. And first one on the list is Andy Lee. You'll have three minutes to say what you need to say. Kelly, you got a timer. State your name and address.
Andy Lee, 5631 Cooley Town Road, inside the city limits. Publicly, I'd like to state that, like many people in this room, I'm against any kind of tax increase. I don't like paying taxes, but if anybody in here decided to do it, they'll pay taxes. Wherever I've been in around the government, not just this government, many governments in this county for a long time now, so I understand that in being a small business owner of two small businesses, you can't operate here over here and set it up like that. I also understand tonight that if you guys vote to raise taxes, you're not voting to just raise taxes on people you don't know, you're voting to raise taxes on your sons and daughters, you're voting to raise taxes on your brothers and fathers, grandparents that didn't give love and old dear. And I know that that doesn't weigh lightly on your hearts tonight, just to make that decision. And I hope that other people understand that this decision does not impact, it impacts you as well.
Yes.
You all pay taxes too. I feel like some local commissioners in this community are trying to stir the pot and make this one's not. Westmoreland is a unique community located in a county that is, by all purposes and intents, would be considered a wealthy county. That works to our disadvantage as well, you probably know. It works to our disadvantage in obtaining grant money, it works to our disadvantage in obtaining other subsidies from the government that we would be eligible for if we were not located inside this county. We also, our unique location and our demographic puts us at a disadvantage to compete for employees. Our employees that we compete for in the police department are recruited by the city of Galton, they're recruited by the Southern County Police Department, recruited by the state, all of which pay our wages and what we offer. Several years ago, probably Works Director left this city and went to work for Galton as inspector. I don't remember his first name, or his last name, it's not, it's his first name. And he told me out of his own mouth, he was making more money, but less had he been inspector for the city of Galton than around our Public Works Department here. That's what we compete with. The other thing, and it was brought out briefly, for the last few years, Galton and Harrisonville Sales Tax Revenue has surpassed the property tax. They don't need property tax like we do. They have sales tax. Westmoreland has no daytime population, which we're working on by adding jobs to the community. The last several years, I've had several jobs, we've listened to it, but not our, with more to come. But we don't enjoy that sales tax revenue that other cities in this county do, and it puts us at an extreme disadvantage. The other thing that I want to put on public record is that I've been in meetings at Galton, I've been in meetings in economic work with this county, and people may not realize, when they're using apps on their phone, you're getting tracked. Your dad's giving something, and it's used for marketing purposes. This is Galton's commission, one of these firms, to do a study. And what they found is that Galton's retail market, their consumer base, has all up and down Iowa in 324. So what that means is, what they haven't had a hard time showing, is that our citizens are shopping there.
That's three minutes. Thank you. Next in is Jeff Hanson. State your name and your address, please.
My name's Jeff Hanson, 441 Rogers Trail, here in the city. I too, like the fellow Westmoreland citizen, oppose any kind of tax increase on a city where the median income is $45,000 a year. We are already living in a time where it's costing us astronomical amount of money just to survive and pay our bills. We're wanting to put a tax burden on people in the city who can't afford a tax burden, whether you feel like they can or they can't. They can't do it. I don't know how many people are in tax default in the city, but we're gonna see people going on tax default in the city when we strengthen them the way we're, we've already been strengthened to the point that we're breaking now. We're in an election year. We don't know what's gonna happen next year. We don't know what's gonna happen with the election. If the wrong candidate is put in there, we could all be faced with capital gains taxes and unrealized capital gain taxes that will affect our homes. We're gonna tax ourselves out of existence, or we're not gonna be able to pay these astronomical capital gains taxes, unrealized capital gains taxes, if they affect our home. And with the current new tax assessments, my capital gains tax will cost me over $25,000 a year if it's an unrealized capital gains tax. I can't afford that, no one can afford that. So we're gonna lose our homes, things that are cherished to us, our most important valued asset, other than our family's home. We pay an exorbitant amount of money for county taxes that we receive very little county service from. We get ambulance service. I'm a volunteer firefighter. I get free ambulance service, so I pay for taxes for something I'm not ever gonna use. I won't get charged for an ambulance service, paid for by this county because I'm a volunteer firefighter. I'm fortunate that way, other citizens of this town aren't. I have seen people in this city who I sit there and look at and wonder how and where they even just pay for their grocery bills, let alone a tax increase. The pastor prayed about the heart. This is not a dollar and cents thing, this is a heart thing. God lives and dwells in our heart. We need to examine this in our heart. I have no idea what the stress of the new subdivision's gonna do to us. It's gonna add 1,000 people to our community. The city doesn't have the infrastructure to support 1,000 people. It's gonna add at least 500 cars to an already congested roadway. We've got the car front porch on the growth issue in this town. We need industry. We're located in a terrible area. We're 20 minutes, we're 25 minutes to the closest interstate.
Time's up. Thank you, Mr. Hanson. Uh, the next in is Charlie, I can't read that last name. Who?
Hammond.
Hammond. State your name, your address, please.
My name is Charles Hammond, I live at 520 Cardinal Circle in the city. I'll make this quick. I agree with everybody here, taxes are over. I don't want to pay any more taxes. I'm a single mom, I raised three kids, I'm a sibling. I moved up here because I love this place. I'm damn sure I'm gonna move, but I'm gonna have to move if you guys keep raising taxes. We don't have enough infrastructure for schools. These thousand people you're gonna move in, where are these kids gonna go to school at? Westmoreland? You don't have more schools? We don't have water. I have water pressure. Anybody here can tell you my water pressure is terrible. Why do we not have better water? What are we using our tax money for? I know you guys can't ask me, but I want you to understand, these are the things citizens of this town worry about. Thank you.
Thank you. Name and address, please.
Shane McClanahan, 2203 Finch Drive in Westmoreland. I'll be brief, guys, I'm a 20-point bulletin. I am a business owner in this town, lived here all my life. I've spoken and thanked you to the guys that I called and returned my call, and we talked for hours. Individual, you all know my concern with this tax hike. It's not, I'm not just speaking for me, I'm speaking for everybody in the subdivision. I've talked to, you know, multiple people in the subdivision. My question to you, and I honestly, I know that none of you can answer, but has everything, have we emptied the bucket on the looking at other opportunities to capture these taxes that are required to provide for salaries, parks, roads, whatever you're trying to lumpen this? Have we exhausted that? And the next question is, and I know you can't answer, does this have to be voted on tonight? Can we further investigate other opportunities to capture this tax revenue that we're needing in order to raise wages, be competitive with Galton, be competitive with Portland, and all that stuff? You guys are not the only ones. I'm a small business owner. I've got, my guys are being coached by other people, but they stay here. We make it work, so there's always another choice or another option that if we haven't looked at, we need to maybe look at. So, you know, we're being overburdened, one by water, we're fighting that battle, that's a different topic. And now we're having this tax to be looked at. We all understand, we are not living back in 1947. Well, we can't right the wrong all in two months. Water, taxes, what's next? Right? So as a citizen of this town, 47 years, you know, what else can we look at? Is there any other options, is what I'm asking? I'm a business owner, we always have options. It can't just be this. It's got, we've got to look this way, not just down the road. Thank you.
That's all that signed up on the signup sheet, and I'm gonna close public comments at 6:20. Ms. Kelly? We're gonna move into the old business, and first, we're in old business, first item of business is to ordinance 082024-1, 2024, 2025 tax rate, second reading. Now I'll entertain a motion for that.
Based on what you said earlier, for the basis of discussion, I move that we approve ordinance for the tax rate currently for 83 cents.
I think I've got to get a motion for amendment, right?
And be a motion to amend the rate, that's the first reading, to 83 cents.
Yeah, we gotta get a motion for amendment, to amend the first reading to the second reading.
All right. I motion to amend for the 83 cent tax rate for the ordinance 082024-1.
Our motion's been made to amend this ordinance from a dollar rate to 83 cents. I give a second on this.
Second.
That record reflected, Councilman Calvert made the motion to amendment, and Councilman Jones made the amendment, or second. There's any discussion on the amendment?
I'd just like to say, I do appreciate everybody's comments. It does affect each and every one of the citizens. I just, you in the audience, but us here, the things that it takes to run a small town in the short time that I've been on this board.
Can I hold you up just a little bit? Let's go ahead and get the amendment passed, and then you make this, get a discussion for it. No more discussion on the amendment. Call robe, Ms. Kelly.
Borders?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Calvert?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Staples?
Yes.
That record reflected, passed unanimously on the amendment. Now I'll entertain a motion on the ordinance for the tax year 2024, 2025 tax rate, second
Make a motion to approve ordinance 082024-1, second reading.
Motion made by Councilman Jones, to pass on the second reading. I give a second on it.
Second.
That record reflected, that Councilman Jones made the motion, Vice Mayor Brown seconded. Now, is there any discussion on this? I will say, I don't think Westmoreland's had a tax increase in nearly 30 years. We've had rate adjustments from reappraisals. Back when, and this is what the town, what the city needs, back when ECC, we centralized our dispatch with the county, our ECC fees back in 2014, we paid 2%. And they was around $6,000. Our ECC fees for 2024 at 2% is $111,000. We've managed to keep up with that without having a tax rate, but it's got to the point where we've got to have some more revenue. Portland just passed a 17 cent hike rate, tax rate, this week, and that they did a job study, and they found out that they wasn't paying their employees enough. And we're already competing with Portland, but they're getting ready to raise their employees' pay rate. So I think it's gonna make it harder on us competing with them. We was unable to give pay raises with this 2024, 2025 budget. With a lot of stuff we had to cut out, it was hard to get that budget to balance with the funds that we had.
Yeah, and I think, I guess, a lot of you probably seen what I posted on Facebook and Hey, Westmoreland. And I think what a lot of people want to see is, they want to see what comes out of what we do. And a lot of what happens in the city is not, doesn't appear to be very transparent. And it's not because that anybody is hiding anything, it's just that what goes on with the money, a lot of it is paying employees to do their job, and to buy equipment, and to, for the city to keep up with everyone around us, with technology and paying crazy fees, and every company that went through COVID and everything, just like we did, they astronomically raised their rates. I know at my jobs, there was a piece of software that we paid $6,000 for last year, it changed to $25,000 this year. And we didn't change anything. They changed. And so you multiply that across the board, where the city is trying to do exactly what you want us to do, which is to not change it. But I think that that has went on for so long that we've gotten to the point where it's caught up with us. And I know that one of the questions was, is there any other way? Is there something else that we can do? And one of the really hard things about being a city and not being a business is that the types of revenue that you can take in to pay for certain items is very limited. You can get grants, which even if you do get one, is limited. If we got a grant to pay employees or to hire new employees, it would only last for a year, or maybe two or three years at most. And then what do you do? Do you let those employees go? Or, you know, what do you do with that? And so whenever we make decisions, and I'm speaking for myself, but I think I speak for everyone here, we try to make decisions that make sense five years from now and 10 years from now. And, you know, we want to see our parks' infrastructure have money to actually go into it to be able to build it back up, not all any year. There's just, there's no way that we could do that. But to make progress, to start fixing things back to where things, you know, one year maybe we could have, you know, some type of tournament or something like that, where we could bring people in, maybe, you know, charge admission, I don't know, I'm just spitballing here. But the way that things are right now, you know, the fences are rusted, you know, all the scoreboards were taken down because they're expensive and we didn't have the money to fix them. And there's a lot of things out there like that. We don't have what I would call soccer field out there because there's a lot of reasons that the lights are not what they should be, it costs a lot of money for upkeep and maintenance. And I don't wanna bore y'all with a lot of, all the things that we've discussed over time, but at the end of the day, what I'm trying to say is, I don't want anyone in here to think that, that we're upping it to 83 cents from what they proposed, which was 64 cents, just because we think that we can get away with it. We're trying to solve an issue that we've, as a body, and I'm not speaking to this body specifically, the city of Westmoreland administration has allowed to happen for a very long time in order to not put any burden on anyone. But I think that the mistake that has happened is that nothing has been allowed to change. And so when these things arise and we have to spend money on infrastructure because it breaks, we don't have the choice to not fix it because it's the city's infrastructure, and you expect us to take care of it. You expect us to have a problem. You expect us to have a police force, to have a fire department, to have a public works department, and you should. Unfortunately, the ways that we can pay for that are through property tax, sales tax from the county, sales tax from Tennessee, and a handful of other state-funded things that we get from the state that we have absolutely no control over. Some of them are based on arbitrary things like state population, what they think that Westmoreland brought in. You know, it's things that we can't change, something that we can't adjust the slider for. So, and then whenever you get into water and utilities, that's a completely different subject and they can't mix. We can't use property tax to fix water and we can't use water and sewer to fix our issues with property tax. We can't pay those employees. There, it's state law that they just can't mix, that the utility infrastructure has to be self-sustaining. So, in a lot of ways, I'm not asking you to feel bad for us, but I do want you to know that our hands are tied at times in the methods and ways that we can accomplish things. And one of those things is like David said, there's times where we just simply tell our employees that you deserve a raise, but we, we're just, we're just not going to do it because we can't. And if I'm that employee, I don't blame him for looking somewhere else to better his family. But there's, there are good employees that stay because they love the city and we are blessed to have those. I just hope that all of you understand that all the people that I've talked to, they don't like it. I don't like it. I've, I've basically explained to my wife's whole family, lives on Brown Street, and, you know, none of them are very high income. And I'm sitting here thinking like, and I ask them, what do you think that I should do? These are the issues that we have and, you know, do, do we raise it or do we not? And they tell me they don't, they don't want it to be raised, but they also, they also want Westmoreland to not fall apart. And we don't either. And if we see the roots and we're not blind, we know that things need to be fixed and if we're, if we're trying to find the right way to go about this. And I believe that David's proposal for eighty-three cents, which is more than I'm sure anyone wants still, but I think that it's probably the best happy medium that we can come up with. And I think that going forward, that the city administration is going to have to be responsible for keeping up with it in incremental ways so that things like this don't happen. Because, I will be honest, I don't, I don't like it just as much as any of y'all do. That's all I have to say.
Any more comments? Any more discussions?
I will say this, I, I feel, I feel like eighty-three cents is fair. Because, and I, I'll explain why I feel that's, that's the case. Sixty-four cents is not a neutral, a revenue-neutral tax rate. Over the course of the past three years, which is what I have to reference because that's the length of time I've been on this body. Over the past three years, we have routinely budgeted the same amount, six hundred thousand dollars in the property tax lineup. The certified tax rate was cutting that by fifty thousand dollars roughly. So it would've been around five hundred and fifty thousand versus six hundred thousand. When we balanced the budget at June this year for twenty-four, twenty-five, it was very hard, as Cameron stated. We didn't have any flexibility. There wasn't money to set aside or earmark for paving. There wasn't money to set aside or earmark for much of anything new outside of things that were mandatory. And it leaves us zero contingency to be able to do anything outside of what's budgeted if something is to break, if something has to be repaired. The eighty-three cents, I feel, is fair because it at least affords us a contingency plan. If something is to break, if something is to be emergent, there are funds there that will be available to be able to cover those, those things without having to dip into what little savings there is for the city. And also if it's not used, it goes into savings essentially, for lack of better words. It's, it's the general fund, prior year fund balance. If it's not used, it goes into that and then it can be used for things such as paving. And over the course of a couple of years, could be accrued to pay for a paving project or pay for an improvement for a park or pay for procuring new lands for parks or pay for a fire engine or ambulance or rescue truck or whatever may be needed. I still feel like a dollar probably would've been appropriate because that would've afforded us to cover some of the things that have been requested by citizens, such as two full-timers for a fire department, to have a staffed fire department during the day during the busiest convoys. To cover things like paving projects where we may be able to pave roads without having to borrow money and then spending what little contingency we may have left over the course of the next fifteen years to pay it back, leaving us with no issue, no, no contingency in those years to cover any emergencies that may pop up. But I feel like eighty-three cents is sufficient for now. And my only worry is having councils in the future who are bold enough and brave enough to vote yes on a future tax increase that no matter what the Senate may be, whether it's two, three, five, ten, whatever percentage increase or rate increase it may be. If you don't have a council that's willing to work together in those years, we're left exactly where we are now or where we have been over the course of the past thirty-five years, thirty-four years I've got reference from since I've been here, I've lived here. And people that are unwilling to raise taxes or increase even budged or move an inch. And then we're left with this issue where it does feel like a huge blowhole at one time. And no one likes it. I don't like it either. But we have to do something because we've reached a point where it's an oven.
Doug, I cut you off early. You take back up where you left.
Sure. I think that the two auditors up here said something pretty profound and that a lot of people don't realize how much it does cost to operate the city on a day-to-day fund. And I did not want a dollar. But I do believe that we are at a point of impasse with the high cost of things that now are charging us to fix pumps and to pave roads and to do all these things that we all know it has to occur in order for our city to continue to move forward. And pay our police force and pay our city works who do remarkable jobs day in, day out. So fortunately, we're not at a dollar. And, and I'm, I'm willing to compromise at the eighty-three cents because I believe that gives us a little extra in order to help us with our day-to-day operations.
All right, any more comments?
So I'd like to say that I was boldly for staying at a dollar and fourteen cents where we are currently at. And I wanted to do no less than a dollar, not because I like taxes, but because it has been neglected so long by so many previous members of the city council that our city is in dire straits. Our infrastructure is, in many cases, beyond repair because people refuse to do the things that are necessary to care for. And it does take people who are bold enough to stand up and say, we need to increase taxes. We don't have to like it, but we have to take care of this stuff that has been put in. And just because it's buried in the ground doesn't mean we don't have to take care of it. Our infrastructure is in dire straits. Our streets that we drive on are horrible. Our vacuum system is broken. Because you don't see it doesn't mean it's not there and doesn't mean it's in good shape. So we'll settle on eighty-three cents.
More discussion? Hearing none, call roll, Ms. Kelly.
Brown?
Yes.
Calvert?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Staples?
Yes.
Borders?
Yes.
As record reflect, that it passed unanimously. Our next item of business is the GMC Engineering Contract Amendment. I hope everybody got a copy of that from, from Logan. He did make the, make the statement there that this will be the last, last amendment that will be.
Make the motion to approve Engineering Contract Amendment number four for GMC.
I second that motion.
Motion's been made by Councilman Jones to approve the GMC amendment, seconded by Councilman Staples. Is there any discussion on this? Hearing none, you call roll, Ms. Kelly.
Calvert?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Staples?
Yes.
Borders?
Yes.
As record reflect, that it passed unanimously. Moving on now to new business. First item there on the list is the Chamber of Commerce. And that's to help them, they've got a part-time director that they're paying. IDB Board is already paying six hundred dollars a month. And the Chamber's requesting that we help them out for another six months at six hundred dollars, like we did on the, what, last year, begin this year. So I'll entertain a motion for that.
Make a motion to approve the Chamber of Commerce.
Six hundred dollars a month?
Six hundred dollars a month, address to the Chamber of Commerce for six months.
Motion's been made by Councilman Jones to approve the six hundred dollars a month for six months to the Chamber of Commerce. I give, give a second.
I'll second that motion.
Motion's been seconded by Councilman Staples. Any discussion on it?
I think it's going to good use. She's done an outstanding job for the first portion of the time here she's, we've, we'd approved. I think she's made tremendous strides in pushing that organization forward and trying to build local awareness to, to local businesses.
I believe that the way she's doing it, running this and pushing this, I believe at some point she's going to be able to sustain her own salary for the income that she's generating. Any more discussion?
I will add, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't make the motion to continue it on if I didn't see a, a push towards that direction. And she's, she, the steps that she's taken in order to try and move that direction and be a chamber that functions self-sufficient under their own means, I think is outstanding.
All right, no more discussion. Ms. Kelly, call roll, please.
Jones?
Yes.
Staples?
Yes.
Borders?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Calvert?
As record reflect, that it passed unanimously. The next item of business is the Resolution R zero nine two zero two four dash one. That's to allow the volunteer fire department to use the old sewer plant on Baltimore Park Road for training purposes.
Make a motion to pass Resolution R zero nine two zero two four dash one.
Second.
Our motion's been made by Vice Mayor Brown, seconded by Councilman Jones. Is there any discussion on this?
Yeah, I think this is gonna be good. It's, it's gonna provide a, an opportunity for the fire department to build a training facility that they can use to charge a, a fee to bring, allow other surrounding communities to use and generate a revenue stream for their department.
I will say this, just for the audience sake, what they're gonna do, they're gonna take containers and, and build a place where they train with live, with live fire and like, like Google does, they're off of three eighty-six, I believe, where they have live, live training. Any more discussion? Call roll, please, Ms. Kelly.
Staples?
Yes.
Borders?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Calvert?
Yes. Yes.
As record reflect, that it passed unanimously. Next item of business is an ordinance, zero nine two zero two four dash one, sewer inspection fees.
I believe that we received a email from Aaron, he asked to defer it.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion for the fourth.
Motion to defer.
That was on the drive. I don't know, this, this shouldn't affect the city.
I'm sorry, I was on the wrong number, you're correct, sorry. Yeah, number, the driveway department received an email.
Has everybody looked at the sewer inspection fees? I'll entertain a motion on, for the first reading on sewer inspection fees.
Make a motion to approve ordinance zero nine two zero two four dash one, first reading. Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman Jones, seconded by Councilman Calvert. Any discussion? Hearing none, call roll, please.
Borders?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Calvert?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
As record reflect, that it passed unanimously. This, this next ordinance, ordinance zero nine two zero two four dash two, driveway permits. He did ask us to defer that, we need to ask for further discussions on that.
Motion to defer.
Motion's been made to defer. Can I give a second?
Second that one.
Motion's been seconded, deferral was not up for discussions. Call roll, please.
Brown?
Yes.
Calvert?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Staples?
Yes.
As record reflect, that it passed unanimously. Our next ordinance for first reading is the ordinance zero nine two zero two four dash three, the rezoning of the Riggs property. That property right now, I think, is zoned R one, then we'll go to R two. That's the hundred and some acres, how many acres is it though?
I would say the back half remaining is like a hundred.
Hundred.
Hundred sixty-two, seventy.
Yeah.
I'll entertain a motion for first reading on that.
Motion to approve ordinance oh nine two zero two four dash three, rezoning Riggs property.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman Calvert to pass on the first reading, seconded by Councilman Vice Mayor Brown. Is there any discussion on this? Hearing none, call roll, please.
Calvert?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Staples?
Yes.
Borders?
Yes.
Record reflect, that it passed unanimously. This next ordinance, I think, I'm gonna ask for it to be deferred and I'll let Mr. Bradley after that tell, tell y'all what we need to do. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask for a referral on the sewer account, sewer, on the accounts. So I'm going to ask for a referral on the sewer account, sewer only accounts. And I've got, we've got a resolution. We've got a we've got to wait to stop the problem.
Solution.
Yeah, we've got a solution, but it don't need to be done as ordinance.
Make a motion to defer.
I'll second.
Motion's been made by Councilman Jones to defer, and seconded by Councilman Calvert. This is not up for discussion, so call the role, please.
Jones.
Yes.
Staples.
Yes.
Orders.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Calvert.
Let the record reflect that it passed unanimously. Now, we still have this sewer-only account problem. And what that is, we've got two people that lives outside the city limits that is on our sewer system. Now, how the one happened, I'll never know. But the other one, we've done. And he's paying his bill. We have no way to measure how much sewer is going through these, going to our plant because they're on sewer only. And you can't put a meter on sewer and measure sewer. And so we've been charging him the minimum fee. And what's happened here, this one particular person has quit paying that minimum fee. And state won't let us cut him off. So he's sent to us about a thousand, a little over a thousand dollars. And we've got to come up with a solution. This ain't going to guarantee that he's going to pay his bill, but this is going to be a solution. Will you explain what we need to do, Mr. Bradley?
Yes. We had talked about doing an ordinance of some sort to maybe make it some sort of violation of city law for not paying the bills, but that didn't seem to be the best way to deal with this situation, which is basically one person that's just refusing to pay the sewer bill. So they owe the money, no question about that. I just asked the council, give me permission to file suit against them, give me a judgment against them for the unpaid amount, or I'm going to lean against their property and then sell their property if they don't pay the sewer bill. So I'd ask that you make a motion to that effect.
Go ahead. I'll entertain that motion.
I'll make a motion that we file a lawsuit against the person who is not paying our sewer bill so that we can put a lien against the property.
To get our sewer money.
To get our sewer money.
Yeah. Allow Mr. Bradley to do so. All right. Entertained, seconded.
Second.
All right. Motion's been made by Councilman Staples, seconded by Councilman Calvert to allow our city attorney, Mr. Bradley, to file a civil lawsuit through General Sessions Court for unpaid sewer bills that are outside the county. Any more discussion on this?
This only affects the those sewer outside.
Yeah, we only have two that's outside the city limits. It's not affecting anybody inside the city limits. Well, we have two that's on sewer and not on the city. All right. Hearing no more discussion, you call the role, please, Ms. Kelly.
Staples.
Yes.
Orders.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Calvert.
Yes.
Jones. Yes.
Let the record reflect that it passed unanimously. And the next ordinance is ordinance R-092024-5. That ordinance is to raise this, my position and these positions paid. And let me explain, let me explain a little bit. We cannot vote ourselves, these guys cannot vote theirself a raise. They can vote, they can vote for that position to get a raise. And it won't take effect until after the election. It won't take effect till 2026. Because these two guys have got to run. I've got to run. And
Twenty twenty-seven.
Twenty twenty-seven, twenty twenty-seven. That's when it's taking, it won't be budgeted until then. Till the twenty twenty-seven, but there's no speaking. I'm sorry, but there's no speaking.
No comment.
So that's what this, that's what this ordinance is about. So I'll entertain a motion on that. Y'all can state the amounts. Whoever makes the motion.
I will make the motion for pay raise for the council and the mayor. And forgive me, I don't remember the amounts. It was two, two two hundred dollars for council per month. And seven, where is that? I don't see it.
Sorry, I didn't hear you.
It's two hundred dollars per council member per month and seventeen hundred per month for the mayor.
I'll entertain a second on that motion.
I'll second that one.
Motion's been made by Councilman Jones to raise the pay of the council to two hundred dollars a month and the mayor's to seventeen hundred, seventeen hundred seventy?
Seventeen hundred.
Seventeen hundred for the mayor's position. Is there any discussion on this?
Yes, and here's why. So over the course of the past two weeks, I've seen countless comments and comments made in passing about how we all need to be voted out. Well, everybody just had an opportunity to run and pull their papers and get their papers turned back in and submitted back into the county so that they could have their name placed on the ballot. And the three of us that are up here are the only three that got our names turned back in. And the only reason I can count to that would keep people from doing this is the fact that we get paid absolutely nothing to do this job. We essentially volunteer to do this job. We don't do, we don't make diddly squat to do this. So that's why I'm in favor of raising the council and the mayor's pay. The mayor, the amount that he makes in a year to be mayor and to go to all the meetings and attend all the meetings that are required of him. And quite frankly, to spend the hours that it takes to be mayor of any city, no matter how big or small, the amount that he makes is an insult, is a slap in the face. I, I think his pay should be more than what's stated in this ordinance. If the job of mayor of Westmoreland is done correctly, and I feel he has done it correctly. But speaking as a alderman, I think this is still low. I think it's much more appropriate, but I hope what it does, at the very least, is encourages more people to draw their papers and get them turned in and run and spurs some interest for this body. Because this makes two election cycles now where there's been no opposition. And quite frankly, that's concerning. The fact that no one wants to run for this body and if a little bit of money won't help, I mean, I don't know what else will. But we've got to do something to try to encourage people to be involved in city government. And outside of three meetings in a year, this room stays empty. I don't, I don't get comments, we don't get comments or feedback from the public readily available in meetings. We don't get the feedback. Outside of about three meetings in this past year, years prior, it's been maybe two people that have come to more than one meeting in the two years that I've been on the board outside of this past year. So hopefully, what this does is, maybe it'll tick some people off to where they want to run, that we're giving ourselves raises in two election cycles down the road. And we, none of us may even ever see it. But maybe it'll at least encourage some people to run. Because I'm concerned for the future of our city, not because of property taxes, not because of water bills, but because quite frankly, there may not be anybody here to run it. Unless we get some sort of interest for people to want to run. And not to spout off on Facebook, but to run for an office and try. Put in more effort than it takes to type on a keyboard. It's easy to type on a keyboard. It's hard to get in front of people and stand up for something. And that may be an unpopular opinion, but I feel it needs to be said.
Thank you. And that's why, originally, this was an idea that I had probably about a year ago. So I actually raised the pay for the council because when Adam and I ran the last election cycle, we were also unopposed. And I knew then, and again, I just want to make sure this is clear to everybody here and whoever's going to watch it later, that this does not affect anybody on this board unless they decide to run the next election cycle. I'm not talking about the one. I'm talking about the next one. And it won't be me. But I hope that by just incentivizing someone for an extra one hundred dollars to pay for gas, to pay for your time, because it is time for their families. We all have families up here that we can be spending time with, but instead we want to give some time to address these hard issues. I didn't do it for compensation. I'm not doing it for compensation. The reason that I want to see a little extra compensation is for someone to at least be able to say, you know what, I can dedicate two, three hours, maybe a month or four hours. And I guarantee you, as we have more and more people on this population, as we more, as we have more industrial things come in, as we have more jobs that I hope that we can continue to generate, there's going to be more need for more meetings. It's not just going to be one or two meetings a month, it's going to be three or four. And for someone to get a little extra money to do that and say, "I'll run," I'm hoping that's what happens by increasing this in the future. Again, it doesn't affect anybody up here. I'll never see a dime of this. I don't want to. But I hope someone in a younger generation, such as like these guys, can come on and say, "Hey, I'll, I'll run." It's going to give me, you know, some gas money. It's going to help me out a little bit for my time. It's just compensation for my time. That means something. Everybody in here values our time. Your time is money. That's all this is. No one's going to get rich beating the mayor of Westmoreland, or no one, I can assure you of that. Thank you.
Mayor.
Yes.
I'd like to say something. In fact, I've represented a lot of, I've represented other cities besides Westmoreland. I still represent the city of Portland. They passed a ninety cent tax rate tonight. We passed the eighty-three cent tax rate. And those are some of the lowest tax rates of the state. This is not a high tax rate that they've adopted. That's very low. Many people in this town will have a lower tax bill this year than they had last year with this tax rate. It all depends on where you fill in the reappraisal. When I started here over twenty years ago, these guys were making fifty dollars a month. And then finally, at some point, changed to a hundred, which is nothing. If you want to have good people, I'm not saying anything about the ones in Westmoreland now, but if you want to have good people, want to serve this city, you've at least got to give them enough compensation to pay for a campaign. I mean, two hundred dollars a month, it's easy to spend that over a four-year it's easy to spend that in one campaign for aldermen if you've got an opposed race, if you've got a contested race. These guys are running unopposed, so this time it doesn't affect them. But if people like you that are here, that are interested, find people who want to run, you know, put your name on the ballot and run. But two hundred dollars a month's not really going to make somebody run or not run, but at least it's an acknowledgement that they are spending their time and their money and, you know, their abilities in the way that other people in the community aren't. And I think two hundred dollars a month is a pretty small price for that. And of course, the mayor's salary too is very low. But I've dealt with other cities, and I just want you to know that this is not something exorbitant these guys are dealing. It's very modest. And I would hope the community would support it because it's such a small amount of money. Two hundred dollars a month, I mean, that's, you know, that doesn't go very far if you have a contested race. That doesn't buy me any signs either. If you've ever run for office, which I have and everyone on this board has, it's expensive. And, you know, and these guys have spent their own money to do it. They spend their own money a lot of the time. And I just want to say that this is a very modest pay increase. Unfortunately, that comes up in the time of the tax rate, but it doesn't affect anybody on this board. That's the thing you've got to remember. Nobody here gets this pay increase unless they put their name on the ballot and run again. Our charter requires that. You cannot vote for a pay increase for yourself. And I just think that's important to make that clear to everybody. This is a very modest, and it's not going to affect any of them unless, on this board, unless they run again. Not this November election, but starting in two years from November, when the mayor's on the ballot and two other aldermen, and then after that. So this, I'm nuts. I've not ever spoken up in a meeting like this, but this is an issue I think is important. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Bradley. Any more comments?
I just want to say I think it's a shame that we would have to raise the pay to the council to get people to want to run. That's a shame because you have so many people that want to tell us how concerned they are of what's going on in the city, that then come time for the election, you don't have anybody to put in. So, you know, do you really care that much or do you not?
Thank you, Adam. Any more comments? Call the role, Ms. Kelly.
Orders.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Calvert.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Staples.
Let the record reflect that it passed unanimously. Next item is my mileage for the month of August. I hope everybody's seen that. It was like two hundred and eight miles. We had a lot of cancellations in August as recently that, as Logan's as he is, and I'll entertain a motion for that.
Make a motion to approve the mayor's mileage.
Second that motion.
Motion's been made by Councilman Jones, seconded by Councilman Staples. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, call the role, Ms. Kelly.
Brown.
Yes.
Calvert.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Staples.
Yes.
Let the record reflect that it passed unanimously. And last item on business is a motion to a jury.
Sound good.
It's not debated. This motion, this hearing is over.